Supportive of the prime minister, supportive of the government, primarily and perhaps only, and not the constituency representative role that they ought to play. And I therefore support a system where you vote for prime minister separately. Prime Minister or President, whatever you want to call the office, the head of state, the head of government, and you vote separately for your MPs. Now, in an ideal world, you would have different votes and you'd have different body supporting. But I appreciate that may not be the case, but nonetheless, that would be my position.
All right. Thank you so much. I know Prof has a thought, but I have a specific question to you, Prof. The one that you posed to me when you were sharing your thoughts on JFJ's proposal. Dr. Thim, do you have any opinion on this before I get to Prof?
I agree that direct election is appropriate. I think that in order to encourage participation, even while it is that voter turnout may be presently low, we have to think of the future. We have to think of the possibilities of engaging the public more and more in the political process. And voting is not the only mechanism, but it is one of the mechanisms. I see that JFJ's concern is that this will simply take the partisan form that the two-party system manifests. But it is possible also for independents to run in presidential elections and disrupt that two-party consolidation that has existed in Jamaica since the 1930s, 40s.
All right. Thank you so much, Dr. Thim. Prof, you asked me a question when I had asked you to share your thoughts on a section in JFJ's. When you directly elect the prime minister, how do you get rid of that person and what are the dangers?
I think that would be my concern. Obviously, your ability to elect the prime minister directly is attractive because you then don't have to make that difficult choice between the constituency rep of the party, who you feel will be no good an MP, but he's in a party whose leader you wish to be prime minister. The problem with that is if we now have a difficulty in holding to account and in controlling a prime minister who is indirectly elected because it's the majority who puts him as prime minister, as head of the party in the parliament, how much more we're going to be able to control a prime minister who will then say, "Uno elect me to run the government, not the majority in the parliament. You elect me directly." And therefore, my support with that, for that position, would have to be accompanied by the most stringent mechanisms for accountability. And one of which you mentioned, Mikkel, and that exists in some countries, the right of recall. That is to say, a situation in which a specific number of the electorate, a percentage of the electorate can initiate what is called a recall petition. If you don't like how the MPs performing, they have promised everything and delivered nothing, you in between elections, you'd have to wait, you'd have a permanent job for five years, can initiate a process to call that member back. And we'd have to have a similar kind of situation for a prime minister elected in that way. He couldn't have the same powers as he has now because the dictatorial powers, which the constitution makers themselves saw and were worried by, some of them supported it wholeheartedly, manly felt reservations, would have that much more difficulty in controlling that particular office. So I think that we'd need to think through different mechanisms for control and management and holding that person to account at the same time as we were to put forward that position of a direct election.
All right. Thank you so much. Now, similarly, I want to ask, the recommendation by some, and I think a vast majority of the Jamaican people would prefer to directly elect the non-executive president now. So JFJ supports the direct election of a prime minister, offering the caution of accountability while ensuring that the person is able to act based on the will of the people, so to speak, who would have elected that person. But accountability is important. But we do not support direct election of the president because from our perspective, the president ought to be the symbol of unity. And then if the non-executive president has some of the reserve powers that we would want, you do not want that non-executive president when they exercise those powers. For example, having an impartial set of commissioners at the Integrity Commission, having an impartial public defender, hopefully the National Human Rights Institute, having an impartial set of people at the Electoral Commission of Jamaica. I think the fear for us at JFJ, when you have those powers that ought to be above the political fray, that the moment you are directly elected by the people and you're in a campaign, that your views and the perception that you are politically biased may happen. That is our view, but I want to ask the view of the panelists on the direct election of the non-executive president. Dr. Thim, let me start with you.
I thought that's what we were talking about before. But for me, it's important to look at this system in a kind of integrated fashion. And I think one thing that Prof Monroe said just now, which is important, is that it's not just about direct elections. It's also about, okay, so what is the role of this specific office? And what are the mechanisms that are put in place to check and balance the powers of either house or either authority within the state? So, you know, direct elections could, on the one hand, improve participation, but it could, on the other, entrench dictatorial authority because this individual would argue, you know, I have been elected by the people, the people have spoken, etc. But it's really important to look at the whole system and how it works to counter that, you know, dictatorial authorities.
Thank you so much.
Well, if I can just start by saying, I totally agree with the comments of both my fellow panelists on the question of greater accountability and restraint. So whether it was a directly elected prime minister or not, you need to have increased restraint. And a recall process is an important part of that and many of the other things that we've discussed. Now, when we're discussing direct elections, and I like your comment about, that's what you thought we were talking about, because in a way we were. If you have one person, one head, which is whether president or prime minister, if you was a expert earlier about direct elections would apply there. If you have though, what you are considering, which is a prime minister and a president, and a president who then acts as a check and balance.
Yes.
I support JFJ's position that you have a directly elected prime minister, who is the head of government, who is the person who has the governmental responsibilities and functions, while the governor general has power, president, I'm sorry, has powers really designed to, to me, more check and balance, but also, I think what you've said about the national unity issue. And what then gets important is how is that person chosen? I agree not directly elected, but less of a discussion about how that person is chosen, not by the prime minister.
Which we go back to the overview I gave earlier, which is why we're concerned about the proposal coming from the CRC. Prof, I know you've covered through that report. Do you have any concerns about what is being proposed? I know you have all your notes written up there.
Look, the hard copy of this report is 52 pages. Schools challenge quiz. How many pages do you think in this 52 is devoted to the issue of public education? Half a page. Half a page of 52 is devoted to the issue of how do we explain the kind of issues that we're talking about here before asking the people to vote on it? This to me is absolutely incomprehensible, especially when we have two excellent experiences in our own history. The way in which we did Vision 2030 in 2007 to 2009, and the way in which the Charter of Fundamental Rights and Freedoms between 1991, the number of joint select committees, the education, Lloyd Barnett's booklet, and we have far more sophisticated multimedia channels now. I ask publicly, because it's not in the report. In the budget of how much trillion that we just heard read and accepted, what is the amount in that budget assigned to educating and consulting our people on the most fundamental decision they can make, which is the basic laws of the country? I really would like to know because those who have looked at the budget tell me they can't find it. I'm still inquiring because we have to be careful. I don't want to use a Jamaican or a Genoese term, but believe you me, if you are telling me, because I know you don't want no British monarch, I know you don't want him Trevor, I know you don't want him Horace, I know you don't want him Leonard, none of us. So make forget rid of him. And then later on, no date, no unbreachable commitment. Later on, we're going to deal with the entrenchment of the Electoral Commission. Later on, we're going to deal with the Privy Council. That's not only illogical in the latter case, it's self-defeating. Suppose for argument's sake, we were to vote to end the monarchy in respect of the proposals that are before us, but keep the Privy Council on the second phase or some other time. Between the point where we end the monarchy and come to decide to withdraw from the Privy Council, during that period, Mike can confirm, the Monarchs Court can rule unconstitutional policies proposed by our cabinet, agreed to by the parliament, and by the Jamaican people, but somebody wants to appeal to the Privy Council, the court which remains our highest court can then overrule even after we have gotten rid of the monarch as a member of the parliament or as head of the executive. So I think what I'm really saying, Mikkel, is that the issue of making us understand the options before you ask us to vote on it, it's just basic. If I have a member of my family, or you have a member of your family who is not well and who has a real health crisis, and there are difficult choices with benefits and risks, it makes no sense for the doctor to consult you. Do you want your family member to have dialysis or a kidney transplant? Without explaining beforehand at some length, and send my questions as to what are the risks and benefits of a dialysis? What are the risks and benefits of a kidney transplant? But we are now being asked to vote on a ceremonial president whose powers are real, if it's just to take over from the governor general, even though they are not what many of us would wish. That ceremonial president chosen by the prime minister, if we go by this thing, will have the power to say, "All right, the four members of the Electoral Commission, the selected members, don't want you again. Make up put my people." Similarly, the commissioners of the Integrity Commission, we're not leaving on the self as I would love you. Change them. Put in my people. So we are in a real situation where we have to put an end to this process disguised as consultation until we get, as the civil society organizations have called for it. We need at least a year of public education.
Before we continue, Prof, you know, one of the questions that have been put forward because we tend to be talking about the pure presidential system as we know it, that we're more familiar with. And someone asks, and I think we do a disservice by keep on using the word hybrid, 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 don't explain what hybrid means. But people have asked me, what about a semi-presidential system? But the answer I give still to individuals who ask that it ultimately comes down to the constraints that exist, just the same. Because you can have a president and a prime minister together, but if the president can just hire and fire a prime minister at will, then you're back to square one with a head of government and a head of state that ultimately does whatever they want. So it comes back to the accountability systems. And I think the question very quickly before I segue into CCG conversation. What is your position on the impeachment? I know we're for the right to recall, if I'm hearing correctly from the panel, but the matter of impeachment, is the CRC correct to say that impeachment is too much of a political exploitation? And therefore, let's not go there, as we've been seeing in the United States more recently with President Biden and what has happened. Should we not be looking at impeachment based on the caution of the CRC? I'll start with Prof and then go down the line.
Just posing the question as Mikkel has done quite correctly. Highlights the problem. As a political scientist, I was taught institutional politics for 40 years. I don't want to answer that question until I have looked at impeachment experiences elsewhere. It's crazy. I want to know, the right of recall exists in Belize. It's the only Karakom state that has that right. I want to know what is the experience of the Belizean people regarding the right to recall their Member Parliament? The British, whom we copied so much from, they instituted a right of recall in 2015. I want to know how that has worked. And similarly with impeachment, we hear about the United States, and believe you me, anybody who now wants to replicate what is going on there in terms of the system of checks and balances, which are, I mean, just in a real mess. We need to, if I may just say this, we need to value some of the gains and the advances and the example we have set for the world. In 2016, the majority party in this country won the election by less than 1% of the popular vote. Zero point five. Not a word of protest, no demonstration, no insurrection because we have confidence in that Electoral Commission which we set up. So I'm saying, Mikkel, I want to give that more reflection. I can't come to the conclusion in that the one paragraph in this report says, "No impeachment" because it is a judicial process that is subject to political manipulation. I want to see what examples exist in the world where that danger has been checked by other kinds of qualifications.
And just to indicate before we segue to Dr. Thim, there is an impeachment process in the Local Governance Act of 2016 that is speaking to how to get rid of a mayor. However, that's not constitutional provision. But should we be looking at even our own experience and ask ourselves, since that provision has been there, has it ever been politically exploited?
Can I just, glad you mentioned that. Pardon me and I beg you. Here is a situation where the same parliament that says impeachment can't work for them pass a law in 2016 in relation to directly elected mayors and municipalities that gives the people in those municipalities, a certain percentage of the electors, the right to initiate a process of impeachment of the elected mayor for misconduct. So it can apply to them, but not to us. I just want to point to that inconsistency.
Thank you. Dr. Thim?
You know, I agree with Prof Monroe that sometimes it's difficult to give a yes or a no to a particular recommendation. And I think it's important to look at the whole system, but also the system in context. Yes, we have concerns about partisan exploitation in terms of our history of politics in Jamaica. And those things should be considered when making decisions. But I also think that it is important to consider that institutions are not going to be perfect. And that in deciding on how to transform institutions, we also have to think about what measures we put in place to ensure that they do not become corrupted or they cannot be exploited by those that would have an interest. So I wouldn't say no to impeachment. I would say that if we consider that, then we should also think about how to put in place the kind of law that would at the same time minimize the prospect of it becoming a political tool.
Yes, absolutely. Safeguards always. Thank you.
And also, the rejection of it out of hand with a sentence, that this can't work. It's part of the education process that Prof keeps talking about. How many people know or knew that there was impeachment process in the books in Belize? This is not, you know, Pakistan or somewhere far distant from us. We have experiences or the opportunity to learn from what was, that's the kind of education that's not being taken place. So I certainly agree with the comments that have been made here. That is something that we should explore. A lot of the changes that are proposed while there is disagreement between the two political parties. The truth is, they agree on some of these things that the public should question. Not just because the two parties agree, it's fine, that the public should question. And this, I think, is one of them. And can I just say something personal? Prof, it's not 40 years you've been teaching political, and you thought me and it was 40 years.
Prof, you've been around for a while. You know, one of the things that people have said, if a referendum is to be held today, I will not be voting if I'm unaware of my final court. Whether it remains somewhere that eludes me, whether it goes to another foreign court, as some people have been calling the Caribbean Court of Justice, or should we have our final court? And let me just quickly say, and this is going to be seeming as if I'm contradicting myself. JFJ's position is that there needs to be severing of the ties to our former colonizers. We should go to the Caribbean Court of Justice. We've invested $27 million in that court. There are safeguards already. We have one of the justices, Winston Anderson, born and bred, I believe in Saint and my parish. So this thing that we've been hearing, that it's too foreign, I need us to challenge that. But before I go to the panelists, us at JFJ, we believe that only the conversation about a final court and CCG should be on the table. However, this is where my contradiction comes in. We're not yet ready for a final court. And nobody knows better than Casey Hilton why I may have made that statement. If you look at why he has made several challenges, it's because of the challenges that exist here. But I will start with Casey, the King's Counsel that will soon become the President's Counsel under the Republic.
Senior Counsel, probably.
Okay.
But CCG and Privy Council. Some people ask reasonably, why are we moving from London to Trinidad? The CCG is awkward in ways that not just because Jamaica and Trinidad are part of the same region. A fundamental reason why the Privy Council is not awkward is we have no say, no input in how the judges are appointed, in how the court is run, in the regulations and rules and procedures that they put in place. In the CCG we do. It doesn't matter that there is a Jamaican judge on the CCG, which is important. But how was that judge appointed? The CCG has a set of rules and commissions and protocols and guidelines that operate that we had a say in and we have a continued say. And with all the criticisms people make of the CCG, a lot of them are due to ignorance of how the thing is set. Let me just give you two things. Mikkel mentioned funding and $27 million. What has happened there is in order to guarantee the independence of the court and that you don't have a situation where the court is created and then member countries don't put in the money to keep it running. When this court was created 20 years ago, what is it, 200 million US dollars, whatever the number was, was borrowed. All the countries had to guarantee this loan, which created a fund, and that fund and the income from that fund has run the court over the years. The countries are not required to continue putting in money because they have a debt that they must pay back. So that's the first thing. The second thing is, a commission was created which has the responsibility of choosing the judges. That commission is made up of nine members. And when you look at who the members are appointed, they're not appointed by politicians. They're appointed by institutions that the region can have confidence in. So for example, the universities and law schools of the region get together and choose two members. The bar associations of each country get together and choose two members. The public service commission of each country, the senior public service of each country, represented on the commission. Those are the people who have come together, who choose the commission, who then chooses the judges.
And Dr. Lloyd Barnett was one of those early members of the...
He was a deputy chair?
Yes.
I replaced him. It's somebody that is very much us. And what happened, if you can give me a few more minutes, this year, really this month, is a prime example of the kind of practical problem that you have with the CCG. The way our court system works is you go to court for a case, one judge hears it. If you are dissatisfied with the result, you appeal to the Court of Appeal. Three judges hear the appeal. If you are dissatisfied with that result and you appeal higher up, whether the Privy Council or the CCG, usually historically, five judges hear it. That's not just a Jamaican or a Caribbean thing, that's for course around the world. Sometimes it's more, in the US, the highest court is nine judges hearing, but the number of judges keeps going up. The Privy Council decided recently that instead of having five judges hear the case, one judge, one of their judges can look at the appeal and say, "This appeal is no good." Or three judges can hear it and dispose of it. No input from the people who are supposed to be awkward, they just did it. There's a lot of complaint, and they then said, "Let's have a consultation process. Let's ask people what they think." After they've been doing it for months, big outcry, they're withdrawn. That's the kind of problem that you have because they don't think that it's our court, really. They're in charge of it. We have no input, no control.
And the greatest importance as well in that senior counsel is that a change was made that had implications for our own supreme law.
Does contrary to our constitution?
That we had no input. So there was a possibility, now that parliament now would have to be thinking about, do I change the constitution? Because people are foreign, made a change that would impact our supreme law. Just to really emphasize to our listeners what is happening there. All right? Let's segue to the other two speakers, CCG versus Privy Council, because people on YouTube complaining that they need to put forward their own questions.
Well, I'll just say briefly that I am for the CCG. I mean, I can't speak to a legal question, but I think that we would benefit from regionalism. I think that Jamaica has to think of itself historically, as well as in terms of the future, in terms of how we build institutions as a region and benefit from. in terms of how we build institutions as a region and benefit from integration with the Caribbean. And the CCJ is one institution that represents that.
Yes, thank you so much. Prof?
Could I agree with all that has been said on the CCJ? And also to pose a line. What happens if tomorrow morning, the British government decides that the Privy Counsel should stop hearing appeals? That's their decision to make. So we're going to then run wrong, go to Puerto Rico and beg. Well, you know, we had reservations about you, but the British tell we must leave them. So we have to come to you. It is invidious. It's an invasion of our sovereignty, which is no longer acceptable. Secondly, we put money, we invested in it. Thirdly, I recall very well when I was in the Senate, we debated along with members of parliament here and in other Caribbean countries, what the rules should be to ensure that judges' appointment would allow for independence and all the other criteria that we want our judiciary to have. So I'm all for the CCJ as soon as possible and not in no second phase.
Yes, agreed. So it's time for Q and A. So I hope you're excited to ask your questions. As we make our way to the mic, please come, as you make your way to the mic, there is a question in the chat. Please ask one of the lawyer this question. Is the government of Jamaica by legal construct a corporation named State of Jamaica?
Repeat that, please?
Is the government of Jamaica by legal construct a corporation named State of Jamaica?
No. No, it's not a corporation by legal construct. I'm not sure what the question is getting at, but the answer to that would be no.
Okay. And another question before I get to the gentleman on the mic. I heard this in the public space and I want to ask it. If we become a republic tomorrow, does it mean that third political parties automatically will be voted into the House and then we become a coalition government? Prof, I will give you that one.
I'm trying to understand. If we become a republic tomorrow, following a referendum, God forbid without us having the kind of public education first, then it wouldn't change immediately the status of the existing political parties, nor other elements of our constitution regarding the right to vote and so on?
Thank you so much.
Yeah, man.
Would you state your name and just the question?
I am Eru Ayshakamu Samenelik and I represent Rastafarian indigenous people. Now, when we get the thing named emancipation, eighteen thirty-four, one hundred and ninety years till now. Now, the white man, they may get twenty million pounds for share up. Black people now get nothing, no land, no nothing. Whereas you know when the republic come and these land, when known as crown land, must be known as the people's land and it must share up out to people. And the people must get the land. Black people now get nothing, none, you know? So, Dr. Tame will start to touch upon the thing about land for their ancestors and Iron Eye people. We need to find out now if we are going along the road to claim the land as the people's land. A two million, two-point-four million squatters there in Jamaica, you know? Two-point-four, because people who pay rent are squatter too. Them live upon the benefit of the landlord, them are squatter. You understand? So we want to know how the land go.
Any of the panelists? You want to come so we can answer the question for you?
Give time.
Any other panelists want to say that? Dr. Tame?
I think that our Rastafarian brethren was really questioning, you know, the mal-distribution of wealth and the questions of, you know, who owns Jamaica really. And I agree that we should think of so-called crown lands as the people's land. And determining how to deal with that land, therefore, has to be something that is put to the people. I think we have to be very careful about the ways in which the state or governments make decisions about selling lands, selling resources, use of natural resources like water, you know, environmental issues like mining and what that means for water and also, you know, people's ancestral rights to places like the cockpit country. So, you know, I think I'm in agreement with the perspective.
All right, thank you so much.
Give time.
Thank you. Wait, we had a... One second, she was here. You have a question? Please.
Dr. Tame, thank you very much for raising the matter, the question of... Thank you. Of the relevance of constitutional reform to regular people, regular people who are trying to live their lives daily. I want to point out here that I have the fortune of having been around when there was a new constitution, when there was vote allowed for my parents. My parents were optimistic when the vote came. My parents continue to be optimistic when independence came. But the independence, the emancipation, the abolition did not arrive and still has not arrived. Where is the hope then for people? That constitutional reform will bring any greater abolition, emancipation? Because we still have the eighty-twenty. We still have people who tonight going to bed without a meal and bed, quote unquote. So what I really want to know is how then are we going to make all of this relevant? Or is there a risk that once again it's a discussion, a debate that takes place uptown and then other people get called in afterwards and with a done deal?
Before I segue to the panelists, just to say, I'm happy you asked that question because I've heard public statement that laws are not made at bus stops and so on. This is where the conversation happens. At the bus stop, the corner before it gets to parliament. So I think the need and the demand for public education is important because consensus between two political parties is a critical part of making the law, changing the constitution. But I always say this, they act at the will and at the instruction of all of us. So it's when they meet us in spaces such as these and when we are informed, they act based on what we demand of them. That is my point before Prof comes in.
Yeah, I fully agree with you that there has to be an explanation convincing between changing from a monarchy to a republic and how is that by itself going to impact and improve the lives of the people? And I can answer immediately, that change alone will have no impact. This is not to say it isn't important. Symbols are important. There are so many of us, you know, the flag is an important symbol for us. Those of us who went to school, if you tried to change the St. George's College symbol from light blue and white, you would have a serious problem with those who have graduated and those who remain. Because the symbol is what we identify with and what energizes us to act. But by itself, we need more. And that would need an explanation that there are constitutional monarchies where the people are living much better than we are in Jamaica. And there are republics where the people are worse off than we are here now. So that that change by itself does not impact the political and economic and social policies which are going to help to reduce the extraordinary gaps which are widening every day between the few wealthy and the majority of the people. That requires a discussion of the kind of political economic policy which would be important. And in that context, how do we structure a republic that would allow the people's views and the policies to impact what the government does and what the government doesn't do? And that has to do with how do you structure a participatory democracy as distinct from just a representative democracy? And that's the kind of issue I'm glad you raised, that the Constitution Reform Committee, there's no mention of it, no discussion of it. Because what they want is to get us to this symbolic, important change and left everything else in the hope that we will trust them to do what is right, to improve the quality of life of our people. That's not acceptable. We need to know now.
All right, next, next.
Thank you very much. This has been a very...
Good night, Ms. Lynette.
Good night, everybody. I want to ask whether the activist judiciary and the political scientists and the advocates will support the fact that despite independence, despite all the progress that has taken place when it comes to rights, women's rights are not being advanced in the country. And therefore, if constitutional reform must make sense, it must advance the substantive rights of women and girls. Everybody knows that there are gender social norms that influence what women can do, opportunities that women have. Although the law says we are equal, there is so much that shows that women don't have equal rights in terms of the political process, in terms of access to finance, in terms of how we are regarded, in terms of violence and so forth. The host of disadvantages that women face as the majority, fifty-one percent of the population, it's a tremendous issue. So the question of gender justice and justice that elevates and promotes the security of women and girls is something that the Constitution must, in my view, advance at this stage. And there are certain specific proposals that we want to make and that we have documented that must go forward. Briefly to say that the report, the only reference to gender that I've seen in the report was made by Sir Philip Sherlock in his preamble. And even the chairperson of the committee does not put gender in the Lord of the Glory language of the preamble. And there are lots of things that need to be involved in the preamble that opens the spaces for discrimination against women to be advanced through specific measures. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Are there any responses?
I've got to start the presentation, the question by reference to activist judges. Not only do we need things in the Constitution to address inequalities and rights, but you also need to have citizen action. Because you can have things in the Constitution that are meant to protect rights of women or of other persons but that don't get protected unless somebody takes some action with it. Because courts can't just get up and hear a case.
Absolutely.
We need to test things. Because earlier about the public defender, for example, is one of the bodies that assists in this, our citizens is also over duty, both to speak up about the things you want done in the reform process and after they are done, to then take action to make sure that they are implemented.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Future attorney on the floor. Oh, no. Okay, you're assisting.
Yeah, right, good evening.
Can you state your name and the question? Go ahead.
My name is Brother Lance Tahuti Watson. I represent the People's Political Party and the Ethiopian Royal Federation, Inc. My question is this, that I believe there is an effort to confuse the people because the constitutional reform being referred to in the report occurred in 2011. It is the Charter of Fundamental Rights and Freedom. The impression being given is that we are recreating the charter. And this conversation is about amendment to specific sections of the Constitution. It is not about a constitutional reform. And so this is a problem that I have with the report. But it's confusing the people to think that they're actually believing they're getting a new constitution when it already exists. And more than that, the issue is this, that for the law to be binding, that is the charter, it must be proclamated to the people, to know about its effect, how it works, what are their rights, how to exercise them and how to get a remedy. This has not been done. You mentioned about the public education in the report, of being only a few pages. That is a problem. It's not public education, it is proclamation. All on the panel have been involved with my matter. I've been involved with this Constitutional Court for the past fifteen years. I have a matter from the High Court in the United Kingdom, a probate matter. A probate matter. What it is, is that it's a probate of my shared estate to be administered by the court in Jamaica. This was man-administered. It went to the public defender and they too started an investigation, but man-administered it. I then came to Dubate of Justice, I came to National Technical Action, also Professor Tame and also Mr. Michael Hilton. Under the charter, you should have advised me or directed me how to get a remedy in Constitutional Court. You did not do so. I did it by myself. I am a creature of the Constitution, of the charter. I filed a nineteen-one application and a nineteen-five application, which was heard by Judges Posey, Linton Posey and Justice Morrison in the Court of Appeal. They gave me no satisfaction. I am now banned from all courts in Jamaica. I'm banned from parliament, every public building. And right now, I have a matter in the court called an appeal against Registra where she will not...
But I want to be able to help you though because we're getting a little bit long-winded. The question you're asking is around the remedy that you would have in the Constitution. I'm trying to make sense of it.
Right. Yes, I filed a constitutional claim...
Yes.
Against the government of Jamaica. I filed a nineteen-one for my right to be remedied by myself and a nineteen-five when I went to the Court of Appeal. I got no satisfaction. I'm now back in the Constitutional Court and Court of Appeal with a Form twenty-four, an appeal against Registra. My question is this, why am I not being allowed to file my application? I'm banned from the court, I'm banned from filing application and Registra, when...
All right, so let me just to cut you a bit because we have several people.
Right.
I just want to be, I'm going to turn over to Mr. Hilton to answer.
Okay.
But I'm sure he won't be able to answer to your specific case.
No, I think he can.
Mr. Hilton?
Because I came to you, Michael Hilton, in 2015 with my complaint of my right being abused. I asked for a remedy, I asked for extraneous relief. And he told me it doesn't exist, but it does. It's section forty-two of the...
So he will respond to the matter of constitutional relief?
What I want...
No, so we have to pause one second, allow him to answer the question.
My question is this, why am I not being allowed to file my application in the registry of the Supreme Court?
This relates to matters that are before the court and the court has made rulings on them. So we can't read that one.
No, no, we have to, excuse me, respectfully, respectfully... Respectfully, we have to allow... Excuse me, excuse me, respectfully, we have to allow the others to go ahead. We can't respond to personal queries publicly. All right? Yes, go ahead. Yes, go ahead, please.
Good night, panelists, good night, moderators, good night, audience online and audience in person. My name is Sarah and I am representing the Love March Movement, a Christian youth organization? Also an alumni of the University of the West Indies. So as this process comes about changing our Constitution? I would love for our Constitution to always be grounded in reality? In truth and what's best for our country? And on page twenty-seven of the pamphlet that you'll see? It speaks a little bit before about total removal of the savings law clause? And that would address the matter of abortion? And the quote here says, "Our legislators have the duty to protect the most vulnerable." And then it goes on to suggest that abortion should be accessible by all. However?
For those who choose to do it, yes, go ahead.
Coming from a place where in chattel slavery, people were dehumanized because of their skin color? It seems quite contrary? That we would repeat the same thing with someone based on their location? So logically, the only thing that two humans can reproduce is another human, right? And so discriminating against the developmental stage? Seems against all that we would want to do with the human rights? So I want to know how, how could it be justified for the Jamaicans for Justice? And if the panelists agree, how is this justified? If we want human rights for all, both born and unborn?
Okay, so regarding JFJ's position, let me say again, it's speaking to the most vulnerable. But let me start to make it very clear. We believe in people's rights to choose. So if someone chooses not to, that's your right to be exercised. If you believe based on your unique circumstances? That you would want to pursue an abortion, again, that is your right. But if one does not want to go to that level of liberal approach? What we're seeing is that the Constitution should remove this special clause? And there should be provisions, for example? Where the law expressly states? That if there is a medical emergency? Then an abortion can be done, rather than relying on common law? So for example, in the United Kingdom, that our common law would be based on? I believe in eighteen-sixty, they made their change. We're also saying that if a woman is raped? Then that woman should have the right to undergo an abortion? Without being fearful that she can be imprisoned for life? Or the doctor can also be imprisoned for life? So our conversation and proposal here at JFJ? Is speaking, one, around the vulnerability? Of those who choose to exercise their right? Based on their own circumstance? But certainly, a doctor ought not to be fearful? Of carrying out unnecessary medical procedure? Based on the gaps that exist in law? That's our position here at JFJ. Not sure if the panelists have any view there?
I want us to think a little bit about this in the context of slavery? And the extreme violence that especially women experience? In the context of their reproduction, control of their reproduction? And sexual violence? And if we think along those terms? The question of individual freedom to choose? How to handle their body? I think is something that our Constitution should provide for. One of the ways of looking at that is through a thing called maternal fetal conflict? Whereby some would argue that the fetus has, you know? A kind of independent status of the mother? In maternal fetal conflict? There is no consideration of the fact that? The well-being of mother, the health of the woman? Is important to the status of the fetus? And it was shown during the period of slavery where, for example? You know, women who were pregnant? They would dig a hole, put her belly in it and then whip her? As if she could not, you know, experience the violence of it? Or rather that, you know, they were somehow protecting the fetus? While disregarding the mother? If we take the perspective that mother's interest? And her decision-making has some integrity? Then we also have to take the position that the Constitution should? Both respect her decision-making? And also give protections to her in that decision-making process?
All right, thank you so much. Any, that's it?
I did want to clarify just quickly? That what we should, in the Constitution, ensure that we facilitate? Is the protection of women, one hundred percent? And the complete punishment of rapists? Because in any case? If a woman is raped and a two-year-old was in front of her? The question of whether or not the person was a person, would it be in question? So it's not mother versus child? Both are humans, both have rights and we need to protect and love both. Thank you.
All right, thank you for your perspective, even if I disagree.
Aquaba, Xavier Yestelin. Greetings, everyone. I'm Haile Michael Kudjoe, many things to many people? Including being parliamentary caretaker for Westmoreland Eastern? And author of this document, "We the People Propose Constitution of Republic Jamaica"? And the following poem entitled "Good Governance" that describes it briefly? "We the people propose Constitution of Republic Jamaica." "It's a bloodless revolution that requires a mentally emancipated way of thinking." "All it needs is parliamentary ratification for implementation." "A mentally emancipated way of thinking is needed for it to be appreciated." "Built upon foundations laid by the Lord Jesus Christ, Marcus Messiah Garvey and Emperor Haile Selassie." "It is designed to create a new and glorious history for ourselves and our posterity." "That shall increase our self-esteem, dignity and integrity." "We the people holding the authority of the country's sovereignty." "Designated as one people under our eternal Father, God Almighty." "We are guaranteed the universal declaration of rights of humanity." "Education therefore is the key to unlock our potentiality." "Supported by defense, health, finance, foreign affairs, trade and industry." "Social Security, transport and works and land equality." "The Council of Ministers has the tools to work together in unity?" "With those appointed and elected in their various capacity?" "To ensure good governance is achieved and maintained in our beautiful country." "Fixed election dates guarantees stability." "Impeachment and removal of corrupt elected officials ensures accountability." "Acknowledging our indigenous language frees us to express ourselves legally." "No extradition, no death penalty." "Time limit between arrest and trial guaranteed to everybody." "Full access to our beaches, waterways, forests and natural resources." "Our parliamentarians and hundreds of Jamaicans already have it for free." "To get your copy, WhatsApp, one eight seven six two two five one one six three." "Then advocate for it to be the supreme law of our beautiful country."
All right, thank you so much. All right, we have to end with the panelists at eight? Because that's the commitment made, so we have to move quickly ahead?
Thank you very much, panelists.
Yes, yeah, my name is Ranger Latham. So I came with a certain mindset about this constitutional reform thing? And my scope has sort of broadened since coming here? And which brings me to a sort of a conclusion? That this constitutional reform idea? Is really about self-preservation of those in Parliament at the moment? Yeah? So, but? Few points have been raised about looking at other countries externally? Especially with CCJ, et cetera, and all of that? So now, on the CCJ, my point would be, my question would be? We are, we're contemplating changing the monarch? To a presidential system which are representational or executive or whatever you want to call it? Now, to go CCJ as a final court? We're not with the West Indies Federation? So the CCJ, are we going to be, it would be same as we're going to London? Instead of going to, we're not part of the broader Caribbean as a single political unit?
Keep them act.
Yeah, as a single political unit. Now, the other question that I have is the one I came here on? Is to figure whether or not this Parliament as it is, is constitutional? Reason for us asking that is the September third election? What I'm observing, I would have read from the WHO? Global Preparedness Board? Something like that it's called, yeah, Global Preparedness Management Board? Was a document they produced called "World at Risk"? In which it's pointed out in page nine of it, I think, or page ten? Bullet number two under subtitle? "Progress Indicator by September twenty twenty." The election was September third, twenty twenty? So therefore, I'm saying? If they kept the election on the third, when there is a truck to queue of progress indicator? For their, what we call a UN WHO Training and Simulation? What we went through was training and simulation exercise? Therefore, how can this Parliament be a legal Parliament? That's my question.
Okay, I heard West Indies Federation and I'm not sure if the panelists captured? To be able to respond sufficiently?
I think that answers, I understood the question? The latter question about the WHO and the COVID guidelines at the time?
Yes.
And there was concern at the time expressed about? Having the general election in September twenty twenty? At a time when WHO effectively advised against it? That wouldn't affect the constitutionality of the Parliament, of the election results? It may have been unwise or one could question it as a policy issue? But as a legal issue, it's fine.
Okay, because I was getting something else, but all right, thank you so much. All right, go ahead?
Good afternoon. My name is Mohammed Abdullah. This whole concept of constitutional reform? And the basic process that is now taking place is flawed. Flawed in the sense that our parliamentarians cannot find unity amongst themselves? As if to relate to what they believe we as the Jamaican people want? The People's National Party? Select, selected representative? Jamaica Labour Party, selected representative? And one of the most phenomenal thing that I have heard coming out of this process? Is from Justice Usma? Where he has said? The whole process need to be canceled because it become politicalized? A man of his eminence had to go to the ministry? To read the document? It was not given to him? And he's a part of the thing, because of his own personal activity? He was unable to attend a few meetings? It is saying to us? That the present person who is leading this whole process? Have their own agenda? And if we are going to change our Constitution? Why deny us the right to participate? And reject from a democratic process? Because I hear everybody clamoring for the CCJ? And as it relates to the Privy Council? But there's a present example as it relates to Vibes Carter? Our legal system tried him? Our Court of Appeal tried him and did not identify? And while we had precedents? Of a prominent leader of this country, Michael Manley? Where the jury tampering thing took place? And nobody looked back to precedents? So how can we trust our own jurors? When that take place? It's simple. And it's a simple law. When the jury's been tampered with, the judge tried? But they proceed to sentence the man. What could happen to a poor man? When I have money to pay a big liar? So these are some of the things where we have to look at. I don't really have a problem with CCJ or Privy Council. My problem is can justice be guaranteed for all of us? In our economic way where we can afford it? Meaning that I can afford a lawyer to defend me? Whether here or Privy? You understand me?
Let me ask, thank you. Let me ask one of the panelists to respond?
In the interest of him, you might want to take three comments? But I would say that, you know, I think? He is pointing out the same thing that Ms. Yvonne Silver's pointed out? There's a larger question of what is the structure of our society? And whether it is just? And whether therefore, the Constitution should not? Or this debate around Constitution? Should not be thinking through, how do we create a more just society?
All right, thank you. All right. A minute prof and then we get to the young man?
Very quickly, the issue of consensus amongst the parliamentarians is important. But that can't be the be all and the end all. One of the reasons why we are in this pickle now? Is that in nineteen sixty-two? You had consensus among the parliamentarians? But we the people were totally left out? So they set up a system which in many ways has shackled us? That can't be allowed again? So we need to make sure that we're not enticed? You know, this is debate, we could change the monarch? Afterwards, we deal with all those other things that you are interested in? The policies that would help the people lift their lives? Women's rights? That's not acceptable? And we need to be very clear? Using all the means at our disposal, social media? Traditional media? To make it clear to the authorities? Both publicly and privately? That public education, meaningful consultation? Must proceed. Civil society organizations that propose that would take at least a year? To deal with some of these difficult issues that you guys are raising?
Yes.
And that is something that we need to insist on? Rather than be trapped into a referendum? And then all things will come after that without any guarantee whatsoever?
All right, thank you so much. Look, we have to? Just because of the time, we have just about five minutes left with the presenters.
My name is Nathaniel Muir. My question is? If Jamaica became a republic tomorrow? What would happen to the Constitution?
I think the Constitution? The Constitution has to be changed in order for Jamaica to become a republic? So that's what we are working on.
And we should use the opportunity to make other changes, to make Jamaica better.
All right, thank you so much, Mr. Muir. All right, thanks?
Hi, my name is Jessica Lewis. I'm coming from more position on environment and sustainability? I'm interested in terms of framing human rights? And how Jamaica can implement rights for the environment? In terms of having rights of nature? A couple of countries have also implemented this, like Ecuador and Panama? Have given legal protection and rights to the environment and the species? That encompass it because? In order for human rights to kind of live and?
All right, thank you. Just one response from one panelist who wants to take it?
Just a quick response, we had no rights to a healthy environment before twenty-eleven? The Charter of Rights gives us that right? But rights remain on paper unless they're enforced? And as we speak now? I believe there is a case before the courts, Mike? Dealing with the issue of whether our right to a healthy and productive environment? Is not being violated by mining licenses that have been given? And are now being challenged?
All right, thank you so much. The panelists will have to leave at eight. Are you able to extend just another five minutes to those we have in the line? Are we take a hard stop with the last person? All right, thank you. Go ahead.
Thank you very much, Clayton Moore. Good evening, everyone. Thank you very much, JFJ. Really appreciate this forum. I have a concern that I'd like the JFJ particularly to address? The whole matter of the selection of the non-executive president? Now, what I see from the position put forward by the JFJ? To me is disenfranchising the Jamaican people? And we hear about, you know, the participation of persons? And Dr. Them alluded to the whole matter of why? We're not participating in the forum as a people? I think part of the reason when we do what the JFJ is suggesting? In respect of making the selection of the non-executive president? Limited, even although you try to broaden it somewhat? Houses of Parliament, local government representatives? Many Jamaicans, like myself? Want to select, elect the Prime Minister and the President? Right? Even if it's not an executive president? And so the concern is the position put forward by the JFJ? Disenfranchising? disenfranchises the people on a whole. So perhaps, yes, we would need to have matters of recall, etc. But the position, I believe, disenfranchises the people.
Thank you so much for your view. And just to quickly clarify why we had that view and extended it a little bit. At the opening, I mentioned that we want certain critical powers be given to the non-executive president. For example, before a law is passed, because you know, right now the GG must sign on them and give assent. So we're saying that this non-executive president, if there is any cause for concern on a piece of legislation, they would then have the power to say to the Supreme Court, for example, please look at the constitutionality of it. So with those particular powers that this non-executive president would have, what we didn't want is that the political thrust of a direct election may undermine the trust among the public in this body. So what we proposed was to broaden the scope a little bit, rather than having just the members of both houses electing, we would then extend it to the two hundred and twenty-eight councillors through a special electoral college. So we looked and we weighed. So we took your point when we were even having the discussion internally. But we believe that you have to be weighing the options to get the best outcome, which is why on the other hand, we said that the Prime Minister should be directly elected by the people with some other safeguards. But we did consider the view, but I still take your point. All right. Thank you so much. Next?
I have three very quick questions. One, why do we need a head of state and head of government? Why not have a directly elected Prime Minister? Whatever you want to call him or her and get rid of the other office? In a country where people are hungry, that's one. Two, I am wondering, you know, what next? Because you sense you have a society which is like a boiling pot with a cover on it. And yes, I like the forum, but what will we do? What's the next step in all of this to get to where we want to go? And sorry, my third question is things at the Integrity Commission, can they be written into the Constitution as well?
All right, very quickly, Dr. Themar Prof, I would ask one of you to take the question of why not merge to a single person assuming both head of state and head of government responsibility? Which one wants to take that one?
Usually they make a distinction in most constitutions between the head of government, who is going to be a representative not only of all the people but of a political party, whereas the head of state by virtue of that position is supposed to represent all the people in a non-partisan way. That's the usual rationale, but there's nothing sanctified about it.
All right, I will leave the other two questions to the end, just in case others may have a similar.
Okay, thank you. My name is Stephanie and I'd like to ask Casey Hilton. He had mentioned that we should take action. I want to know what action can we take after we've stated our opinions and what we'd want as a nation? What action can we take to ensure that when they replace or remove the king, they also remove the crown's ownership of land so that it can be given to the people for reparations? What action can we take?
Thank you, Ms. Stephanie. The question of crown land is a much more difficult question than what I was addressing, which was enforcing rights that are given in the Constitution. So for example, gender-based rights and so on. The problem with crown land is technically it is not the people's land. It is owned by the government. It's called crown land, but it's owned by the government on behalf of the people. So that it's not a situation where one can say this is land that should be distributed because it is owned by the crown. So they changed the republic. It would stop being called crown land, but it's still owned by the government. So it's not going to change that.
All right, next?
Good night. Leo Bennett. Two question. One, our observation. It appears that the thrust for republic is heading for a stalemate. What next? And what can we do as ordinary people to ensure that after so much scarce resource has been expended on this? It's just not just a talk shop. Because the government hold firm on their position and the opposition is holding firm on their position. What can we the people do to ensure that republic become a reality? Two, how can the ordinary citizen challenge the powers that be? Prof, talk about dictator. I have a firefighter who scale the arbitrary transport center. Up to today's date, there is no machine, washing machine at the Yarpa Fire Station a month after that enormous fire at Riverton Dump. We talk about the fundamental rights, the rights to life. Since the start of this era, serving members have been dropping dead stress. Mr. Stames, you spoke about leisure. We don't get a day off. How can we challenge Mr. QC? Or can, or Mr. King's Counsel, how can we challenge the government in giving us a day off? Maybe the questions are too long for this time, but ponder on them.
So I'll ask Casey to answer the one about the challenging the time off. But I'm going to close out with the what next question.
Well, I would say that the Representative Association is challenging some issues as far as I'm aware with the government in terms of service. And that sounds like one that should be taken up. I don't know anything about the detail about it, but it is the kind of issue that should be taken up with the Public Service Commission.
All right, and just to answer one that was asked earlier, we are strongly advocating for the Integrity Commission to be entrenched in the Constitution. It was recommended in the nineteen nineties for the Office of the Contractor General to have been entrenched. And we know that the Office of the Contractor General was merged and strengthened into now the Integrity Commission. And we believe that that recommendation should carry in twenty twenty-four. You can't have that body policing not only parliamentians but public officials and the very people that they're expected to hold accountable can't just go in parliament and say, you know what? Let me weaken the Integrity Commission by simple majority vote. So yes, we support the entrenchment. But I'm going to close out or ask each panelist to close out, given the stalemate, what next? And what citizens need to do to ensure that this republic, the road to republic, is reflective of their views and their vision for Jamaica? I'll start with Casey and then close out with Prof.
Have more forums like this, have more public outreach and education and have more voices heard. It is difficult to do it in the middle of an election process. A point Usma has made. It is the kind of thing that will get done more easily post-election when that is not overhanging over our heads and you have more outreach like this.
Okay, thank you. Dr. Them?
And certainly based on the timing of, you know, the provisions that once it's tabled, it has to sit in house for three months, etc., etc. I suspect that this matter will not be sorted before the next general election. And what it means is that it will be up to the citizens to continue to press on this issue, to self-organize, to self-educate and to make demands, including through legal processes that are available to demand change.
Thank you so much, Dr. Them, Prof.
I agree with what Maziki and Mike have said. More forums like this, but beyond that, we need to learn from our experience. When the government was intending to proceed to have a Chief Justice act indefinitely without any criteria in an unjust way, the various associations, the citizens, we spoke out and the Chief Justice had to be appointed within one month of being appointed to act. When the government was intending to keep secret cabinet papers, no longer for thirty years, but for seventy years, the Press Association, the Media Association, each of us in our various communities, we spoke out and the government had to withdraw the proposal. As we sit now, we need to insist that the budget for public education and the plan for public education, that this be disclosed to us and that the government accept its responsibility to lead and to be a partner in that public education process. Otherwise, we're just not in it. Simple as that.
Thank you so much to our panelists. And I will just close out by saying an uninformed public is a politician's dream. I tell my students that every semester. So in other words, let's not become the dream of any politician. And let us arm and equip ourselves with the knowledge necessary so that when we're voting in that referendum, we're doing it based on an informed position and not because we're supporting the position of any political party. We may not agree even with JFJ's recommendations, but the point is that even from a place of disagreement, let that disagreement be from an informed perspective and a principled and moral position that you have for yourself that is rooted in rights for all Jamaicans. Thank you so much to everyone for your time, your questions. And thank you to the team. And I must say special thanks to Nicholas, who has been on the ball ensuring that everything was put in place. And to the panelists, thank you so much. We really appreciate it. Have a good night, everyone.